It's six o'clock and we'll go ahead and call our October meeting to order. Thank you all for being here today. First item on our agenda is the approval of the September thirteenth and the twenty-seventh minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
I second that.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. We have two public hearings this evening. First is on our water improvement project. That would have to do with the possibility of utilizing or applying for OCPRA grant funding. So we will need to have a public hearing that lays that out and discusses that. So is there anything that you wish to discuss prior to me opening the floor? No? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the floor to a public hearing.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second to open the floor to a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Anyone here wishing to speak one way or the other on the urban water improvement project? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the floor.
I'll make a motion to close the floor.
I do have a sign-in sheet.
Okay.
And then Linda's here and Adam are here too, if anybody does have any questions. But if we could circulate that, that would be great.
Have a motion, Les, you second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We'll get this taken care of first before we move on. Thank you.
Happy to provide a recap or summary on the project if counsel or anybody would like.
That would be great.
Sure. So hi, everybody. Adam Sedko with Wester Engineering. Been involved with the town for about the past year scoping out this project, looking at the water system. What does the town's water system consist of? Two existing groundwater wells, one treatment plant, elevated storage tank, and distribution system. And our main objective was to comb through all these assets and look for, first off, any immediate problems, but also evaluate any needs that could present themselves over the next twenty years. When we first got involved with this, we had a feeling that we'd be pursuing funding, some sort of assistance, and most of those agencies, like you, require you to look at a twenty-year planning period. So not just fixing the problem today, but being ready for the problems that could occur in the next twenty years. With that, what are the problems that we identified? Largely, the distribution system and the elevated storage tank were in great shape and didn't really find any needs or any issues with those items. Most of the needs lie with the groundwater wells and the water treatment plant. Shortly after Wesler got involved with the town, well number one had just failed. Quit producing water altogether. So our first priority was to inspect that, check it out, figure out what the issue was with that. The well was cleaned, the pumping equipment was replaced, and that well is now back in service. But having that one well offline kind of opened everyone's eyes up to what the risk would be if it happens again, particularly considering well number two. And I don't know if we have a picture of it over there.
We do.
No, we don't. Not of well number two specifically. But well number one and two were different types of wells. Everything for well one is above ground, so if a motor starts to make noise or grind or whatever, you can hear it. And you know, I better call someone and be proactive with this. Well number two, all the pumping and motor equipment are about a hundred feet below ground. So you're not able to be proactive in the event of a failure with that. So that was another need we identified, bringing that equipment above grade so the town can maintain it properly. In addition, the age of the wells came into question. Well number one was drilled in the sixties and well number two was drilled in the eighties. And I know everyone's rolling their eyes that I said something in the eighties was old, but you have to remember our planning period here. So it's not just how old is it today, but how old is it in twenty years? And what could come up from that perspective? Also, the water treatment plant. That was the first reason Wesler got involved with this. It's leaking. The treatment unit itself is an all-in-one kind of packaged vessel, if you will. It's made of steel and it's leaking out of the bottom. Unfortunately, because of how and where it's leaking, it's not something you can repair. You can't pick the thing up and fix it and put it back down. So with that being failed the way it was, it was time to replace it. So once we identified that the main guts of the plant needed to be replaced, we looked at all the supporting devices, the pumps, electrical controls, all the chemical feed equipment. And that story was all the same. All the equipment was outdated, if not obsolete. Finding replacement parts were difficult. And also, the space itself of the plant's very cramped and crowded, making it difficult to maintain. I will say, however, that the town staff has done a great job maintaining that unit. It was built in nineteen sixty-five, and those things typically last thirty years on a good day. So the town's very much got their money out of that plant. So all that said, what are we going to do about that? What are the solutions we identified? For wells number one and two, we're going to rehab them and get them back in good operating condition. Like I said before, well one's been cleaned. So we would clean well two, bring all that pumping equipment above grade so we can maintain it and be proactive with the maintenance of it. And also, planning for a third production well, considering the age of the first two. Now, the way we plan to structure the project is such that if bids come in favorable, then we can go forward with well three. If bids come in unfavorably, that could be a decision where that could be left out of the project in favor of attractive rates. Also, water treatment plant improvements. Not just replacing the package unit itself, but a new water treatment plant altogether. So what are some lessons learned from the first plant that we could react to here? First off, we're going to build the vessel out of stainless steel, which will prolong the life of that unit, if not double it. Also, the plant itself is much more spacious and blocked off into rooms, making it a lot more conducive to actual maintenance and rehab and just keeping up with all the equipment in the building. Project costs, how much will all this cost? Breaking it down, just our construction costs. The rehab of the wells is about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. The new well construction's about four-hundred-and-fifty. The water treatment plant is about three-point-five million. And the soft costs, legal, engineering, rate consulting, grant administration, are about a million dollars for a total project cost of five-point-three million dollars. What's the schedule that we're looking at? We're still pursuing multiple funding options, as Ward has mentioned. With OCPRA thrown into it, that pushes our schedule back a little bit. But currently looking at bidding the project this spring or summer, starting construction in the fall and be a twelve-month construction duration. With that, would open up to any questions?
Adam, that construction schedule, does that breaking ground in the fall have to do with waiting for OCPRA?
It does.
Okay. And what's the rate through the state if we would just try to, if we would secure a low-interest loan through the state and finance that project for a period of years?
The interest rate?
Do you have any idea?
I believe it's at the floor, which is, I want to say, two percent, but I'm just going off of historical information. It might change those.
Has it gone up a bit?
Okay, okay.
Counsel, any questions for Adam?
I do not.
Counsel wish to look at the OCPRA funding option? Move forward with? I guess I'm looking for just some thoughts.
I make a motion to move forward with the state funding so it doesn't delay the project.
Okay.
It's my opinion.
Based on the breakdowns that Wesler had given, doing the grant versus just financing the project, it looked to be like a difference of five dollars per month?
That's about right, yep. Five dollars a month.
Les, what's your thoughts?
How much delay time between the two, if you will?
It adds about five or six months.
Okay.
And it has to do with the funding cycle and SRF trying to line those up.
Do you want to speak on? I can, yeah, I can kind of give, I mean, I think you guys have touched, based on the timing issue. I mean, between SRF and OCPRA, there is, obviously, we're talking about some timing issues. And in OCPRA's defense, they've had some internal changes. And I know with the way SRF's application process is going, I know it's going to be probably March before we'd be able to get an SRF loan finalized based on the timing of what OCPRA requires and what SRF requires together. But it will save, it will save five dollars a month. I mean, I know it's only seven-hundred thousand dollars, but for a town this size, five dollars a month can help offset.
And the OCPRA grant is seven-hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, seven-hundred thousand, yes. And then, like I said, I think between what Adam and Linda and Shannon have set down and discussed and looked at numbers, it looks like it's going to save you guys about five dollars a month per user. So, I mean, in the long run, I mean, I know there's a timing issue with construction and things like that, but I guess one of our big things is we want to try to not impact rates more than you have to for your users.
You know, it's a difficult balance for counsel in a way because you understand the urgency of the project, right? There's a picture of that thing leaking right behind you.
And either way we go, rates are going to increase in order to pay for the project. I mean, that's just the sad reality of it.
So I think to distill it down as much as we can, it comes to waiting another five or six months versus five dollars on the rate pair.
What would happen if you would split the project and apply the project each way? Could you do that?
Well, because OCPRA requires you to have your local match in place, that's where the timing issue comes in. Because if you don't have an SRF loan applied for and in the process of being closed, then OCPRA will say, where's your local match? And it may throw, even though we do the application, which is relatively, you know, it's basically free to apply, but it's going to throw you into a spring application if we don't have that SRF or whatever other funding that, you know, I know, I think Shannon's talked to a couple different options. I mean, I know there's, you know, there's other bonding options and some different things that, you know, and I know SRF has definitely got some more, a few more hoops to jump through these days than they used to. So it's, you know, it's just a matter of kind of having your pros and cons list and decide, you know, for you guys as a board, to decide which direction, you know, if it's an emergency to get that done, you know, do you just kind of weigh the costs and go ahead and unfortunately pass that five dollars on to the user and get your water situation in the shape that it needs to be six months quicker. So, I mean, I think that's what it's going to look like.
We have set aside some of our remaining art to go towards some cost. So there's just shy two-hundred thousand there, which, you know, in a five-million-dollar project is.
I think if we were to.
Yeah, if it was a seven-hundred thousand dollar project, it would be a grant. You already have your, have your local, yeah, money to fund that.
I think if we were to split the project up, it would cause some issues with SRF because, you know, the entirety of the project has been ranked and scored in their system, and we'd need to go back and amend that. And that could impact the attractiveness and the scoring of the project on their list. So initially, I would have some concerns with that.
Would yours in a motion?
Terry?
Yes, I'd make a motion that we go forth with the earlier option with the SRF.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second to finance the project at a low-interest rate through the state of Indiana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance to East Stab? Well, no, that's not it. Thanks. To establish a fence permit fee. This comes from the county. County does all of our permitting and they have asked us to consider this. Chuck, do you have information on this, please?
Yeah, we have a conflict in our ordinance. Chapter six, zero-six-zero talks about fences, hedges, and walls and permitting the inspections and all of that. But back on page two-thirteen, which is chapter eleven, it talks about exemptions. And then, under the exemptions, it says fences, walls, hedges placed outside of public right-of-way. So we have a conflict. We've been requiring fence permits when people come to us or if they go to the county first, they've been requiring them to get a fence permit.
Okay.
But.
Just for any fence, privacy fence, channeling fence, any type of fence?
Because we have ordinances on the height, the type, where it can be located.
Keeping it off our right-of-way, the alleys.
Visibility on corners, alleys, and things like that. So what the Plan Commission voted on last night, what we'd like to do is just eliminate item one on page two-thirteen that says exemptions under fences, hedges, and walls so that we will now be legal in what we've been doing.
Okay. Where does the twenty-five dollars come in?
That's just a permit fee. And that's what they've been paying when they go to the county now. Everybody else has a twenty-five dollar permit fee, so.
What about existing fences that are going to be replaced?
We would.
Excuse me. Will they require a permit?
We would require a permit on that.
And that's a fee that the county takes, correct?
They take that, they come out and do an inspection. We do our own inspection just to make sure that setbacks and height and everything is met the way it should be.
The ordinance that I have here talks about we should authorize March County to have the authority to charge twenty-five dollar fee per the entered local agreement dated in two thousand and thirteen to install a fence. Plan Commission is going to fix it, fix the wording?
Yes, we've asked that that be removed and voted on it, and so that will be removed from chapter.
Does that require anything from counsel?
That would require your approval.
Okay. Is that being presented tonight?
That's what we're presenting to you with that.
Okay.
So that we would be eliminating and then verifying our charge. Correcting a situation that's been going on, ongoing for quite a while.
It stated that there was an exemption, so you're asking us to?
This was the thing I got voted on.
So we're being asked to vote on the change to the zoning ordinance?
Approving the change from the Plan Commission.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to open the floor to a public hearing for this. Is there a motion to open the floor for public hearing?
I make a motion.
I'll second that, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone wishing to speak in regards to ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero-four?
So, my question is this. If someone has a fence that needs to be replaced, they have to go to the county and get a twenty-five dollar permit to be able to take down their fence and put up the new one?
Yes. Not to take down their fence, they can take that down anytime.
Right, but to replace it, if they're doing something very similar to it, they still have to pay the twenty-five dollars?
Yeah, because we'll check and make sure that it's in the right location and that it's the right height, visibility, and that sort of thing.
Okay.
And without us voting on the twenty-five dollar fee, the county will cease collecting that twenty-five dollar fee? They've been doing it anyway?
They've been doing it anyway.
Okay.
That's what other municipalities and the counties charges.
But they can't technically acquire a fee that we haven't adopted, so I don't know how they can do that.
Well, it just was an oversight on everybody's part because one place it says we require permits, inspections, and everything else, but it's clear back to the back of the book that this one little sentence is there.
I guess I'm going to speak up for the people. You know, I don't see no problem with going out and expecting it and making sure it's the right height per the zoning and making sure it's not in the right-of-way or something goofy. But, you know, I think it's totally government overreach that we want people to fix up their property. We want people to fix up their homes and everything that we do, we want to charge them. And I think it's ridiculous. I think it's ridiculous for the people to be nickel and dime for a twenty-five dollar fee for a fence. I mean, we want people to fix up their properties, but we're going to charge them for it. I'm against it.
I would respectfully disagree from the standpoint is if a person goes out and builds their fence and no fee required, no plan required, we go out after the fact and it's wrong, now they have a very heavy expense to take it down, remove it, and get it compliant.
Well, I.
The fee is, helps us to have the plan. They can show us where the fence is going to go, tell us what kind of fence it's going to be. If there's a problem at that time, we catch it before they even start anything. The only other thing is afterwards, the fact, we find it, now it's got to be torn down, replaced, repaired, or amended.
Well, I'll speak on behalf of myself. I have already an order in to have replacement fence placed at the funeral home. Where do I stand on that? I'm taking down fence and putting up new polyvinyl.
At this point.
Permit. I think it's twenty-five dollars per section for you.
Thank you, Les. I love you too.
Okay, so anyway, we have the floor open to a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in regards to this ordinance?
I have one more rebuttal on this. I know what you're saying there, but you can have a plan and you can follow that plan by going out and expecting it before they can put the fence up. But I don't think that you should nickel and dime the public for twenty-five dollars. I think you can then have a plan, you can enforce a plan, but just not have the twenty-five dollars.
And just put it as a permit required, no cost.
That would work for me.
Okay, so.
I think you're going to find this going to be a problem because if it don't require a fee, people aren't going to get in there and do it and take care of it. It's going to be going on just like we have been.
Well, it's the same thing if people's going to do without the fee then, and you're going to be nickel and diming them.
Okay, so anyone else in the public want to have any comment? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the floor.
Make a motion to close.
Second.
Motion is second to close the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash oh-four on first reading. Is there a motion? We can either vote to approve, deny, or send it back to the Plan Commission with a recommendation as to what we would like to see the ordinance look like.
You want to go?
I sure, I like to send it back and I don't think that we need to, I have, you have my full support to go out there and examine, to expect, to make sure it's a six-foot fence, it's not on the right-of-way. But, you know, from my understanding is every time that you want to go out and rehab a house, you need a permit for this, you need a permit for that, you have to pay for this. I just think for a fence, a simple fence of make the house look good, we want to encourage people to do town improvements. I just don't think a fee for twenty-five dollars for the people is right.
But, Terry, what's your?
I agree with that, and I think inspecting it is not a problem. I don't think that's out of the question to ask them for that. I'll second the motion.
So we are making a motion and a second to return this ordinance to the Plan Commission with the recommendation of removing the twenty-five dollar fee, is that correct?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, old business.
Did we prove the minutes yet?
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who are you?
I guess.
You worry about my fence and charging me twice as much?
All right.
Perception.
Last month, we tabled a memorandum of understanding between the town and real services for their use of the match at center. Has everyone had an opportunity now to look that over?
Yes.
And read it? Is there any questions or discussions?
None on my part.
Les?
Did you get it?
I looked over briefly.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept those as they're written.
Your second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero-two at the Matchett Center fee scheduled for two thousand twenty-two. That was passed on first reading last month, and it has been advertised. We can either pass it on second reading and set it out for a third reading or we can suspend the rules and pass it on second and third.
I make a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading.
Second that.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules, pass on second and third reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Now you can make the motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I second that.
Motion is second on.
All in favor, yes, aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Wow.
We have to sign that too, buddy.
Okay, trash proposals. We had asked Kim to send out proposals for trash collection and recycling for two thousand twenty-three. As we all know, our contract with Republic expires on December thirty-first of this year. So I'm going to open these, which are back here, and I'll pass, I'll read the amounts. I'll read the amounts and then I'll pass it down for everybody to look at. And Alex, would you be the final inspector to make certain that the insurance and everything that has been asked for is there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you need a trash container for the box?
Yeah, yeah.
Jeez.
Republic, are they here? You need to recycle that box, man.
Hey.
Okay, the first that I'm opening is from Republic Services. They have a bid for curbside trash pickup and curbside recycling, six-hundred-and-thirty toters. I'm taking it that's what we currently have. And it also discusses the current dumpsters that the town utilizes. So, the first one. What's the difference between the first and second pages?
One is with the monthly cleanup, one is without.
Which one is with the monthly cleanup?
Is that the large trash, large trash?
The first one is without?
No, that one is with.
With.
Okay, so with the curbside recycling and that, was that in the proposal?
The monthly pickup, oh, yeah.
Okay, so with the monthly large trash pickup, the first month is sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents per customer, I'm sorry, the first year. Then it goes on the second year to sixteen ninety, seventeen fifty-eight, eighteen twenty-eight, and nineteen oh-one. The recycling is three dollars and seventy-five cents and goes up from there.
Did you say it's three seventy-five, counsel?
For recycling in the first year? So, we add the pickup and the recycling together?
That's how ours is currently billed.
Okay.
So that's what, twenty dollars?
Twenty dollars a month?
A month.
A month?
A month, for each. Oh, yeah.
Cover letter, bid bond. So everything's marked in here, Alex, so when it gets to you, would you mind just making sure it's all there? So twenty, twenty dollars?
What is it currently right now, Kim?
Fifteen thirty-eight, I believe.
Yep. So twenty dollars in the first year per month, and then it goes from there. Is that, have I, is that correct? Have I done that math right? How are you?
Hey, good. After you got the box open, that was the hardest part.
It was, man. I didn't recognize you, you're not dressed up.
Well, you know.
You're in your cattle outfit.
That's it. I came through the ranch.
I'll go ahead and, while it's going down, is it okay with counsel, I'll open the next one?
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Terrible mess, man. Apex of North Judson, Indiana. Is there someone here from Apex? Hi, how are you?
Not too bad.
Good. Apex. Check is there. Pause is there. References. Okay. Indicating that everything is there. Four ninety-six confidential financial statement and the bidder's bond. Apex, in the first year with trash and recycling is nineteen ninety-five a month. And second year's twenty ninety-five, third year's twenty-one ninety-nine, and then it goes up from there. So in the first year, it's nineteen ninety-five, which includes recycling. That's curbside recycling, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. You guys okay with me opening the next?
Yes, sir.
How many words are told?
Huh?
How many words are told?
Four.
Four, yeah, four that we received. I thought, I should say I have this to.
It's more dramatic.
Okay, just don't cut your finger, Liam, we're calling him.
GFL Environmental?
Yes, sir.
Where are you guys at, uh?
Uh, we are on a clay pool where our landfill is about thirty-five minutes from here.
Okay.
Who's your landfill?
Yeah, very nice.
Who's the name?
GFL.
GFL?
I'm actually from the Michigan office, but spending quite a bit of time down here in Indiana.
Yeah, good.
Sniping.
What's that?
Sniping.
Yeah, right.
So they've indicated that, and all of these are for a three-year contract, um, my understanding is, and then they've provided additional years if, if you wanted to renew after the three. So, uh, GFL has the documents, the bond, ten. Where do I?
Uh, tab three.
Tab, thank you.
You're welcome.
All the bond, bid bonds, insurance, certificate of liability, tab three. All right, uh, GFL. Um, so you're, you're proposing no curbside?
Proposing no curbside with an, uh, alternate of, um, single drop-off site, compartmentalized thirty-yard dumpster, yeah.
All right, um, in the first year, or first month, first year, every month is twenty dollars. Uh, twenty sixty, twenty-one, twenty-one sixty-three, um, so it's, goes from twenty dollars, twenty dollars and sixty, and in the third year is twenty-one dollars, um, for trash pickup and.
The alternate's in the red, sir, at the bottom for the recycling right there?
Alternate of thirty-yard compartmented recycle roll-off, place at a centralized location for community drop-off, container will be provided and serviced twice a month, um.
That's at no charge then?
Okay, if there's additional hauls beyond the two, it's four hundred ninety-five dollars.
That's correct.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
So with this community-wide drop-off for hazardous waste and stuff, you all know people dump stuff, is that something you're responsible for, or you're gonna have the town take care of that? They dump off of something that, that needs to be priorly cleaned up, the public?
We, we wouldn't take any hazardous waste, so we would provide a list of what is acceptable to all of your residents, and we would expect them to put only what's acceptable in it, and if they put something else in it, we would not be responsible for that.
Yeah, but we know how that works.
Yeah.
Well, right, I mean, we all, it, it's the same, it's the same if they put, uh, hazardous waste at the curbside, and the garbage company's not allowed to take hazardous waste, so if they identify it, they leave it sitting right at the curb.
You know, I'm just saying that they dump something that, that's not on your list to take, who cleans that up?
So, so that's an excellent question, all right? Let's address the hazardous waste question first. If, if somebody put hazardous biomedical or hazardous waste at the curb, no garbage company's gonna take it.
Yeah, but sometimes they dump it in there and they don't know it.
That's right, and if we didn't know it, I guess we would have to take it if we didn't know it, but if we knew it, we wouldn't take it. But if they contaminated the load, let's say they put something in there that wasn't hazardous, but it was a bag of garbage, food waste or something like that, we'll, we'll take that all day long. We do it now in five different counties. Um, you know, in, in Indiana, I've learned that there's solid waste districts that have nothing to do with solid waste and everything to do with recycling, and the residents contaminating the environment.
Yeah, but those like, we have March County solid waste, you dump it off, they have people there that, that control it, the police it. You're just putting a dumpster out here in a parking lot where anybody can dump off, so you have occupants from Evyn Green or Tepin Anu, Warsaw dumping into that, how do you police that? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so it's a great question. So we, we have five counties now where there's drop-off sites and they're not policed, and unfortunately, we get a lot of contamination, and we take that, okay? Uh, I would highly recommend that if you were, uh, awarded the bid and you have a central location for a drop-off, uh, for the dumpster, that it would be fenced in, there would be hours, and there'd be cameras and signs that said there, there were cameras. Uh, but you can never prevent a hundred percent from somebody dropping off, for instance, a mattress, right? It's not hazardous waste, it's not recyclable, but we would take it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, is it okay if I move forward?
Yes.
I like to. Nobody's be a good one. All right, so this is from Borden Waste Away out of Elkhart. Is there someone here from Borden? Hi, thanks for coming.
Thanks for inviting us.
Uh, confidential financial statement, okay? Um, Borden has a proposal here. Advertising, okay, that's from us. Okay, so ninety-six gallon toter, but we have not, right?
I believe.
Yeah, um, so Borden, um, Borden is in the first year, eleven dollars and eighty-nine cents for trash pickup. And three dollars and ninety-four cents for curbside recycling. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a, um, will you, will you have the monthly large trash pickup?
That's included.
It's included in the eleven dollars and eighty-nine cents, okay. All right, so we're talking.
Fifteen eighty-three.
Fifteen eighty-three, and for the first year per month, goes up to twelve, eight forty-eight, and four thirteen, thirteen eleven for trash, and four thirty-four for re, for recycling. Does this also include our town dumpsters?
Your dirty, you like your roll-offs?
Yeah, that we already have.
So that should be, you should see that on number four?
Oh, is that what the special dumpster service is? Okay. All right, I'm gonna pass this on down to you guys for your review as well. Appears everything is there, but I'll let Alex be the guy to make sure. So fifteen eighty-three, right? Am I right on that?
Yes. And then does it include the large trash pickup once a month, cause, you know, my, my people are used to it.
Any others?
No, that's it. Discussion, questions for anyone, council?
My thought process, I guess, is make a motion to, uh, have Alex look over this and further look at the numbers and do further research. My thoughts.
Okay, so you wanna take them under advisement?
Yeah, just so I could sit down and look at them further without much delay.
Okay, um, how long will it take anybody to, obviously Republic's already here, how long will it take anybody else to get set up to service the town with dump, or with toters and what have you?
Yes, so I'll speak for us. We're ready to go, uh, day one, so we have all the equipment on site, we have the containers on site, so.
Okay.
When the contract is ready to be.
What would a pickup be for you?
Um, well, so that, I believe that would be, what is it now?
It's Friday now.
Friday now, so we would, we would make it to where it's not a disruption for your current residents, so we would make it for Friday.
And you have adequate, uh, staff to do this?
Correct.
We would be ready, um, I, I would like thirty days to get brand-new carts.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, I do have an inventory of not brand-new carts.
Okay.
But I would wanna get them ready.
Sure.
Yeah, but we have the, the trucks in the, in the.
Okay.
Man, we're doing, really, it's a one truck. It's a one truck, one time a week.
Okay, so, um, obviously, um, sooner the better to, for notification, so everybody can get geared up and do whatever you need to do, right? Okay. Um, okay, so I have a, a motion to take them under advisement. Terry?
I'll second that.
Motion is second to take the, um, bids or the quote, the proposal, under advisement. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Uh, do you wanna reschedule the meeting later this month so that we can?
Can, yes.
Okay, um, so let's go ahead and schedule that now so that we don't, you guys prepared to schedule it now?
Yeah.
Okay, how long do you think you'll guys, a couple, week or two weeks?
I'm going twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Okay, so can we do it on, uh, Tuesday, the eighteenth?
Looks good to me.
Four o'clock?
Give me a second.
Okay.
Fire my phone. My, uh, silence button broke, so I had to shut my phone down.
Does that work for you?
So that's just next week?
Yeah.
One week, okay.
Let's you give council time to, to look them over.
Okay.
Okay.
What'd you say?
At four?
October eighteenth, a Tuesday?
Yeah, that works.
It's four or four thirty?
Four thirty.
Four thirty, okay.
I don't get off work until four, so.
Yeah, I know you don't. Okay, um, so we'll take the, um, proposals under advisement. I thank all of you.
Thank you very much.
For the work that you did to prepare those, that, that can't be easy, putting all that together and, and providing that information. So, um, council will review those along with our attorney, and, um, next Tuesday at four thirty, um, the, um, we will vote on, uh, on that, um, award. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you very, very much. Uh, two thousand twenty-two community crossings pay approval. Ryan, come forward. Or sit down, whatever works for you.
Uh, so tonight, we have the, uh, I believe this is the first payout for Ian Blue for this year's paving project. Uh, I went over with, or I went over with it with Roger on the field, and all looks good. Um, there was like a few things as far as, uh, catch basins that were not set correctly, but that was due to a combination of factors of being, um, adjustable rings that were not standard sizes as well as compaction. Um, so we got that, I think, pretty much sorted out, I'd say. Um, so I, I believe that was for, uh, non-released over drainage, and so we would have to have a payout too, which would take that ten percent of that total contract, and that would be the closeout for, for the project, I believe. Okay. Am I mistaken? So we did take ten percent off?
Did you take ten percent off?
Uh, line four or five, I believe.
Line, ten percent, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Ten percent for drainage, yeah.
Okay, so then, uh, that would be in step with in November, you would come back and have that ten percent, uh, after I went through it with Roger, so we were good to close out that project, so.
So we are approving the pay?
Mm-hmm.
How much?
One hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-three cents.
Council, there a motion to approve that for community crossings payment?
We're good, money?
Oh, we got, does that money come from the state, so we love it.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve that payout.
I second that.
Motion in, in second to approve the, um, community crossings pay, uh, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Does he just send anywhere down here, cause there's not a separate place?
Um, it should be at the top left corner underneath the, uh, the owner, which would be.
Under owner, contractor, change.
Did they mention Town of Bourbon has the top left corner for the owner?
Oh, so just sign underneath there?
Yeah.
I guess you just need to send right here.
Yeah.
Terry, I wouldn't spend that unless I have approval.
Yeah, I know, I'm like, I cash a lot of money.
It is.
Just in case my wife asks me that, I need to have that know that it's there.
Isn't that a trip to Disney?
Just about.
Yeah.
Just about, it was a whole lot more than I expected.
Ordinance, ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash three is establishing a, uh, new fund for the opioid, um, monies that local government is receiving from the opioid lawsuit settlements. Um, Bourbon is, will be getting, uh, monies from this over the course of the next twenty years, I think those payouts are.
Ridiculous.
Um, so we need a fund established to allow Kim to put those funds aside, and then there's specific things that we can and can't do according to the state, uh, with that opioid money.
I make a motion to create that fund for those opioid funds.
I second that.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash four requiring a fence permit. We push that back to the planning commission. Kim, the floor is yours.
Uh, approval of claims forty-seven fifty-one to forty-eight thirty-two, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-six cents.
I make a motion to approve those claims totaling that amount.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Um, just a note that the water department is going to start hydrant flushing this week for the next couple of weeks. Um, so, you know, if there's any discoloration, you just need to run your water for about a minute, and then trick or treat is still scheduled for the thirty-first from five to seven.
Yes.
And that's it.
Can I add one thing to the trick or treat?
Well, sure you can.
Methodist church wants to block off the street like they did last year, so I just need that in the minutes of the meeting that they're gonna block that off.
What street?
Over here.
Washington?
Washington Street and, are we doing, uh, we're not doing North Street, we're just doing Washington Street, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we did last year.
That's what you did last year.
Yeah.
Motion to approve that request?
I make a motion to approve that request.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks for being festival and wearing your costume.
Thanks, you're welcome.
You too.
Chief Martin, the floor is yours, sir.
Do you have my mushroom for it?
Huh? You can literally just bring a tape recorder and just push that button.
That's a normal response.
The Clay Street Church was gracious enough, uh, twenty-third of last month, they had a fish fry fundraiser.
Yeah.
And all their profits, they donated to the police department.
Wow.
Wow.
How much is?
They are the best.
And the fish was outstanding.
I didn't know they had it.
What was it?
Okay, so they must've had a great night.
It was fantastic.
Yeah, the donations was six thousand eight hundred and five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Very nice.
That, they are, um, they are absolutely amazing to.
Very appreciative, very appreciative to them.
They, to the fire department, they send, some to the fire department, the police department all the time. They are.
Very kind of them.
Great.
Great citizens.
Anything else, Chief? Thank you. Roger?
Yeah, the activity reports, and the other thing I have, lead pickup begins next week on the twentieth.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Need me to drive again?
Yeah, anytime you're ready.
You do that, Warden, I do snow plowing.
Chuck?
I think you got part of the report earlier today.
Yeah.
Um, we're working on some unsafe and unkept properties, um, not to bring them out publicly, but, um. Ben, uh, I don't know if you've been out near Shells this week, um, they've been cleaning up around the other building.
Nice.
They painted it, um, getting ready, they're going to put their laser, uh, printer in there. Um, that's for their sand mold.
Yeah, looks good.
Oh, that, that's great.
Tremendous improvement.
Yeah, and, uh, they're still working on hauling out, they've been hauling every day, uh, out of sand pile they've got, they cleaned up around the building, so can't, uh, ask them to do anymore. Um, Heartbeat Place, um, sent them a letter last week, um, I think I copied it all in that, just, um, trying to make it a little bit better. Um, we have some places, areas between the buildings and, uh, that can't get through first responders would, would just.
Okay.
In jeopardy trying to do that, so, um, haven't heard back from them. I did get signed, uh, copy that they got their letter.
Okay.
And so we'll try to be moving forward with that and get that in better shape than what it is.
Nice.
Good, thank you.
No, thank you for what you do, Chuck.
Chad? Chad?
Uh, since last meeting, we've had seven calls.
You guys were busy this morning.
Oh, yeah.
Had two of them. Yeah, no kidding, makes you late for work. Okay, um, Alex?
Um, the Jackson and Conkle properties remain set for review with Judge Palmer November eighteenth. Um, I'll get with Chuck and we'll take a look before that rules around.
Okay.
And then Karen Home, um, I sent a note to her attorney advising if the fees were not paid at the end of the week, we're gonna file a claim, so I haven't heard back from him yet. That's all I got.
Have you heard anything on our pending court date for all of us on November twenty-third?
Judge Colvin has set that, he set my motion to quash for a hearing two weeks from Monday. No one has to be at it, that's why I'm gonna argue.
So, he's got two weeks?
That all those should go away.
Alright.
Yeah, I know everyone'll be disappointed.
Oh, man.
I'm going to be, but.
That's okay, I'll be with you, Kim.
Alright.
Thanks, Alex, and congratulations on your wedding.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, and your new.
Soon-to-be new child.
Yeah, new addition.
Lot going on. Thank you.
Um, any patron comments? Nope, counsel?
I have no further.
No, I just wanna appreciate all the department heads are winding down another year, you know, they'll be getting into leaves and snow, and I just appreciate everybody um comes to keep continuing, to continue.
I've been watching.
Are our trucks ready?
Yes.
Okay, good.
We're getting them ready.
If I get down before work, can I get the newer one?
I don't care which one it is.
I I would like, I have two things um for the for the council, one, um, the um, I've been in contact with the McVickers regarding the windows at the old paint store, those are on order. I spoke with Plymouth Glass, they were supposed to be in in September with supply chain issues, they're still on order, but I did confirm that they in fact are on order, and as soon as they arrive, they will install them. So, I did confirm that with the owner of Plymouth Glass, um, so we're doing that. I attended a meeting earlier this week and was asked to serve on the local US thirty board, uh, there's a US thirty corridor board on a on a larger scale that looks at US thirty and thirty-one as they become limited access highways. And discusses what impacts shutting off particular uh roads and what have you will be. Um, I was asked to serve as as a appointed by the commissioners along with several other folks from uh throughout the county. And we met for the first time, we discussed a lot of things, we're gonna start bringing the school superintendents into that, uh, we're gonna bring our fire chiefs into that to discuss emergency responses to what it might look like if certain roads are shut off. We're in a good spot in Bourbon, we have the interchange, of course, but still, it couldn't, it could hamper emergency response. So, my plan is um to uh bring together Mr. Riffle, Chad Stepp, our police chief as well, um, and uh start talking about um recommendations to the board, and 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 most of the members have been asked to do that. So, in your particular community, what might, what it might look like, and what recommendations that that board can uh turn over to NDOT as NDOT continues on this process of making thirty a limited access highway. I I would anticipate that I would also at some point uh bring in the plan commission, um, as they look at long-range planning and what what anything that that might look like as well. So, just as an update, we had our first meeting, we have another one next month, but I'll keep council informed as to how those, uh, how that board progresses. And then we'll also be asking for input, so, um, from the local community, so as that progresses, so requiring as well.
Awesome.
That is all that I have. Having nothing else on our agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, everyone, very much.
Ward, I was gonna say the, on Apex, I didn't see a certificate of liability insurance on that, there's only one I didn't didn't see it on.
Okay.